Good evening. I'll call the February 13th, 2018 Town Council Committee of the Hold Meeting to Order at 6:31. And we have one councillor absent. Councillor Overy is ill and she cannot attend tonight, but everyone else is present and accounted for. Calendar Communications. Councillor Morosik, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
I went to Board of Ed meeting and Juliette.
Oh, thank you.
And zoning meeting with Congress.
Zoning meeting.
Okay.
I went to Florida.
I went to the legal interview meeting and then the Board of Education meeting yesterday.
I attended the legal interview meeting also. Yeah, we got played to legions.
We normally do at the council meeting when we get to citizens petitions when we're there, when everyone's here gathered for the hold. I attended the Board of Ed meeting and as far as communications, I just give a shout out to Public Works Director Schneider for helping to solve a problem with a snow issue at a bus stop in Mystic. So that is all hopefully resolved to everyone's satisfaction. So we're happy about that. All right, on to item number four, approval of minutes, 2018-0028.
Second.
Moved by Schmidt, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the minutes? The only thing I had was on item number six, new business, 2018-0020. Filling a financial assistant one position. I don't know if you guys are already there. Right beneath that it says discussed and recommended, no action taken. However, if you go to the back, we voted it and it carried unanimously. So I'm wondering if that line on the front should be stricken? Yes?
It has to do with the difference between something that you discuss in committee as opposed to taking formal action. So recommending no action means it's not going forward to the council. It's something that you decided in committee by motion.
Say that one more time, please.
When it came to filling of positions.
Right.
The previous council, when that referral was made, had said that basically that would be an informal discussion.
Okay.
At committee meetings, that it didn't require any resolution by the town council or any further action outside of committee.
Okay.
So while you took a motion and you approved the filling of the position, no further action because it's not going in, it's not going to the council for a resolution.
Okay. So it's not inconsistent with the statement on page two where it says the motion carried unanimously? Okay, thank you for clarifying. And then one other thing, right after 2018-0014, which is the Economic Development Commission Annual Report Presentation, if you could add in at 10 o'clock, the council agreed to move on because it's in our rules that we have to take the pulse and make sure that everybody wanted to move on. And we did agree to move on at that point when it was 10 o'clock. Is there anything else? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes of the January 23rd Cal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. So moved unanimously. So that's 8:00. Unfinished business. Great. So we will move on to item number six, new business. And the first item on the agenda is 2017-0132, status of Groton 2020 School Construction Project. And we have a couple of people here this evening. We have Mr. Norris from Planning Department and Mr. Help me out, please.
Jack Butkus.
Jack Butkus from Arcadis.
Yes.
Which is the project management company?
Correct.
Thank you.
Hi. For you, I haven't met all of you. My name's Rick Norris, the project manager for the town. I have with us Jack Butkus from Arcadis who's our program manager. We have a brief presentation we're going to give to you. We want to leave plenty of time for questions and answers. So if you have some of those, make sure you let us know. And if we can't, don't have the answer tonight, we'll certainly find it for you. So without further ado, we'll run through our few slides.
Thank you.
As you know, we, through this last legislative session, we had three projects that were in the mix to get approved by the state. All three of those projects were approved. What it shows here is the project budget that was approved, the estimated reimbursement rate to the town, and the fact that we've also had the Cutler School, which is a diversity school, which our legislators and the superintendent of schools exerted a lot of effort to get that approved finally. So that's an 80% reimbursement for that particular school, which would take place at the Cutler School. This shows a couple of the two budgets. Tonight, we're going to concentrate mainly on the middle school because that's leads the pack as far as getting that done to get to the other two projects. You can see this bar here, this is where we are in the middle school. And during that period of time, we're going to complete schematic design, detailed design, construction drawings, and get it to a point where it goes to the state, comes to the council for approval or certification by the Permanent School Building Committee to allow us to go out to bid for that project.
Excuse me. Do you have another coffee, councillor?
Yeah, sorry.
I have water, does not have one.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
So this project, the goal, and we're on schedule, I might add, is to be completed with substantial completion of the building by June 30th of 2020. That'll allow the summer for move-in and to complete any punchless items we may have. To address the elementary schools, we'll call them elementary schools because it's conversion of the existing middle schools, Cutler and Westside, to elementary schools. Those would follow on behind. And the goal for those is to open in 20, for the school year of 2021, '22. There is a potential option available to us, and we can talk about that in a second. But the state requires us to determine whether it's cheaper to renovate or build new. So we still could be in the position where we build new and the schedule may be able to be accelerated slightly. But right now, we're showing the worst case of the school being open for the '21, '22 school year. This is our wiring diagram of all the people involved in this project. It looks kind of busy. The Permanent School Building Committee, of course, over here advises Public Works. They also work directly for you, the town council, and they have oversight of the project. So they look at our budgets, look at where we're going, look at the work that's being done. They are involved in some of the design aspects. So they're busy, they're meeting bi-weekly right now. Groton Public Schools had a large input. Obviously, the project, and they're the customer in this project, so we need to provide the programs, or the educational programs, and that committee from Groton Public Schools and myself and Jack and several others have had five meetings starting on November the 29th to complete the programming effort for that school. So we know the size of the school. We're allowed 154,000 square feet. They've come up with a basic layout. They're looking at adjacency of spaces. They're at a point where the architect is now going to work with the schools on how those spaces are outfitted. And I'll show you, we'll show you a picture here in a few minutes on what, a couple of views of the proposed school. Other agencies involved, the Planning Department, we worked with them already. We need to get through Wetlands, the Planning Commission, several other organizations. We've got the fire marshal involved, of course, the building official, police, Leglite Health District, and Parks and Rec. Jack is from Arcadis. He's in the direct line below us, who tries and controls the cats that are down below, the SLAM, who is the architect, the ONG Industries, who's our construction manager. If those of you that remember the last project, we had a construction manager as agent. So the department held 28 contracts for each of the schools. We don't have the people to do that now. So we went to a construction manager at risk who gives us a guaranteed maximum price when the building's finally designed. And they control all the subcontractors, or the trade contractors, if you will. Also, we have an environmental professional and a commissioning agent that we bring on to help with some of the technical details getting to the final design. This is the initial site plan we have. The school will be located here. You can see playing fields. We had a great discussion over entries to the school. We looked at four of them. We looked at one here, one here, one here, which you probably saw in the referendum, and one here. These two fell out relatively quickly because of various traffic issues, grade issues coming up the hill, those sorts of things. So we ended up with these two entrances. And potentially now, this would be a bus entrance, come up and drop kids off on the bus. This would be a parent entrance to the middle school, coming up the Grasshaw Tech driveway and coming up and around and down. We're still working on this with the state. The people at Grasshaw Tech that work with the state have been very forthright with us. They're willing to coordinate the effort with us. We just need a few, a couple of approvals that we're working on. So we can move on from there, Jack. These are a couple of the massing diagrams. If you will, this is sort of looking from the church or Groton Long Point Road. You can see how the building is set into the bank. So there's not much exposure here. We have the gymnasium over here. We have where this, the cafeteria here. We have some art rooms in the front, the library and stuff in here, and the classroom wings in the back. So we have some public areas and we'll have, for example, the gymnasium could be used as a public area, the cafeteria. This is called the black box theater instead of an auditorium per se that you may be used to seeing. It's more of a space where you can set it up for various uses. And it's been successful in numerous places. And that allows the school district to have a couple of different venues that they could use. So for example, the people here could use the high school gym, I mean, high school auditorium, they could also use this black box theater. And in between here, we have like a 1,500 square foot stage that can open to both sides. So it gives a lot of flexibility to the Board of Education and the school district for doing various things. You notice there's no windows here. We want to keep the kids in, so we don't put any windows here. No. The windows just aren't put in yet. This would be the science area here, admin, and all those administrative functions will be on the first floor. And then there'd be three identical classroom levels above that. So there's a 16-foot difference between this entry and this entry. So for administration stuff would be here. With the bus drop-off, the kids would come right into the first floor of the education wings, if you will. And we got, have numerous next steps. You know, the middle school is now in the schematic design. So we've had two meetings with the state already because they want to meet at every stage of design now as opposed to the last time around where we basically met when we were about halfway through the project and then ready to go out for bid. We're looking at making a presentation on the middle school to Wetlands and the planning in April, May timeframe with the hopes of doing some of the site work before the first of next year. So later this fall. We're in the process of hiring the architects and the construction managers for Cutler and Westside. And as I said, their first big project would be to determine which is more cost-effective, to renovate, is new, or to build new, which is going to be huge for us. So we need to figure that out. We're going to make quarterly presentations now. This will be the first of numerous as we go through the project to both you, the council, and the RTM. And we have information available on the town website. We're working at getting some additional places like Facebook where we can get some of the information on the project out. And of course, if you have questions, you can always call me. There's my phone number, website, and welcome, walk-ins are always welcome because I like to talk to you folks. So we'll open it for questions and we'll try and answer them best we can. Thank you.
Thank you. So then the easement to use the Grasshaw Tech Drive is something that our school district and our legislators are working on?
Yeah, the, the, oh, John.
Yeah, yes, I'm working with our legislators on that. They've already started preparing the materials needed to get that done. I think they're still waiting. We need to put together a little bit more detailed description on the easement, like, on the legal description on that. But yeah, it's moving along.
Great.
And based on your question, really, the project at this point is a town project. We fill the schools, then we turn them over. They're the customer. We try and provide as much program as we can. It may not be exactly what they show in their ed spec. Through all the discussions and the size limitations and that sort of thing, we get them to buy in on the program, which they have. They've been very good at that and forthright and have had to make some difficult decisions early on in the project. So.
Councillor Morosik and then Zephar.
Rick, I noticed that other agencies, as the town staff and so forth, is it going to be required to hire any additional people or can we handle it with the people we have?
Well, we're looking, you know, as we talked about, we need a, an LEP to bring on, Licensed Environmental Professional. We need a commissioning agent. And we're looking at hiring a building inspector under contract like we did for the other schools that's available to do all three schools. That worked out very well for us last time because the inspector was available when the tradespeople needed him. And it relieved the Planning Department or the building official of that requirement and trying to stretch his staff a little too thin.
So he'll be hired specifically for the project?
Right, right.
Councillor Zephar.
How many students is this built to a committee, is planned to a committee?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
How many students with this facility?
The plan right now, and we've already passed our maximum enrollment, but it was designed, it'll be designed for 947 students.
And we're enrolled beyond that already?
No, we're, the enrollment's falling off already. We're down to 938. And the enrollment's projected to drop over the next several years.
Okay. And if the enrollment expands, what happens?
Well, we've, we will be able to hold service more than a 947, probably up to around 1,050 or so. So there is room available based on the utilization of classrooms. We've also, part of the design feature is to make sure we have an expandable area in case we gain 200 or 300 students over the next five years or something, and we have to expand the school. So those are all considerations that go into the design.
We have room to put additions on.
Yes, we do.
Is the foundation built so that it'll handle additional stories?
Well, the foundation is not built yet, but we wouldn't put additional stories on. We'd probably extend out to one end of the building.
Okay.
And the general service areas, you know, the public spaces or the, or the common spaces would be able to service those additional students.
And the last question I have is accommodation for students with disabilities.
We have, that was a huge discussion. We have numerous rooms set aside. Actually, one of the people that worked for the state has a student, a child has a disability. So the Board of Ed got grilled pretty thoroughly on that. We have, we have what they call an academy for emotionally handicapped kids. We have one where they require additional equipment. There's some spaces for counseling for those students. There's, and that program, I think, was discussed at length and came out pretty well.
How about elevators?
There's one elevator in the school. It's in the central core, which is right in the middle. And that'll be controlled, obviously, because only those students that need it should have access to the elevator.
Sure.
Or teachers, of course.
Councillor Duke?
When you mentioned that there's reimbursable, like up to 80%, for example, as I understood that we would take the full amount for the bond, for the town bond, and then the state reimburses us, I'm guessing over time?
No, the way that works is we've already submitted a reimbursement for our first several months of work. So we submitted that in November, I guess. And we got a check in January for like $225,000 for work in the middle school. And we're able to project a couple of months forward. The end of January, we submitted, we submitted another request for reimbursement. And we were able to look forward three months for both the middle school and one of the elementary schools that we're allowed to request reimbursement on. So we'll have some money in the bank to start with. Of course, that'll be spent down. But we'll be able to reimburse and look forward on a bimonthly basis. And the state, of course, has to hold their retainage. Right now, they've increased their retainage rate from 5% to 11%. So that retainage, that 11%, if you will, that's due for our reimbursement, we won't get until the project's completed and audited. So we want to make sure as we go through the project that all the change orders, paperwork, if there are change orders is in place, and all the other paperwork's in place so the audit goes smoothly and we can receive those funds as quickly as possible.
Councillor Parker?
On page eight, you said a study renovation versus replacement for the elementary schools for Westside and Cutler.
Yes.
But this wasn't factored in previously when you guys were looking at it?
It was, but, I don't know, Jack may want to explain that. So it was a change in legislation that recently came out. And I'll let, I'll let Jack explain it because he's our expert on the state processes.
In the 2020 plan, there were analyses done. And it was anticipated at that time that renovating the buildings to as new condition was going to be more affordable than a full-scale replacement, which has been the trigger for the state to give you what's called renovation status, where they will reimburse for repairs and replacements in a project. There's another piece of legislation, and the magic of renovation status is that several years back, the state broke up the reimbursement categories. It used to be you would get reimbursed for your projects based on your town's reimbursement rate, and that was it. Several years ago, they put in kind of a stepped scale where if you were to build a brand-new facility that you never had before, such as our new consolidated middle school, you took 10 percentage points away from that reimbursement rate to create a new facility. But if you qualified for renovation status by showing it was cheaper to fix than to replace, then you would get the higher rate. The inference there being that if you chose to, you know, at some point, well, I just want a new Cutler, so I'm going to knock it down and build another one in its place, then they would have penalized you the 10%. At some point in the last couple of years, there's been language that's been added to statute that says, maybe that's not the smartest thing. Maybe we should be encouraging people to do what's fiscally responsible regardless of which side the chip falls on the line. So presently, there is language that says the state will give you the higher rate to replace a building if in fact it saves everybody money, which sounds like common sense. Those that we deal with up at the state have said, well, that kind of negates the whole effort to encourage people to reuse buildings, to save what is good and to make it new again, which, you know, the perception is, why keep creating new stuff? You know, why buy a new car if all you need's a new set of tires? So there's some debate within the department that oversees our projects as to that particular piece of legislation that talks about getting the higher rate for a replacement building. The bottom line is whether they are in favor of the wording or not, it does exist. So in order to qualify for renovation in any project, you still have to do that math that would show that it's more affordable to fix it than to replace it in order to get the higher reimbursement rate. So it behooves the town to revisit that once again with the actual design team who gets hired for those projects. Although the trajectory that these projects had through the studies that were done during the 2020 plan indicated that it pretty well certainly will end up where renovation was cheaper in that view at that point in time. So we're going to revisit that with the actual design team that's being hired to confirm that in today's market, with the things that a replacement building would do, which is potentially could get us probably on a mid-year move, deliver us a building earlier than a renovation. These are going to be empty renovations because the students will already be moved to the new consolidated middle school. So we don't have to work around students to do the renovations. So that is another factor, is that it may be that the savings of that extra construction time point towards a replacement building being a better value for both the town and for the state.
Well, second question. So we're going to pay money again to do a second analysis of this?
It's money you'd have to spend anyway to qualify as a renovation. You've got to go to the state with the math that says, here it is. You know, we've actually looked at the program. We've looked at the site. We've confirmed that X is the better value. So even though in concept, the study was done during the 2020 plan development that pointed towards renovation, we have to prove it. So it's not a conjecture. It's the actual designer saying so.
And the expenditure of additional funds is not, is not really there because you're, we're going to have to do a programming effort anyway. And you're going to have to determine whether the new programs fit into the old schools or not. So then it's a matter of putting, they call them chicklets, you know, the classrooms or whatever, together and coming up with a square footage price.
Okay. My, my other question is, if they don't want the renovation and then decide we have the school, is that going to change what we bonded out?
No, it shouldn't. No, the value's going to be, could be less because it'll be the less option.
I have a question. The building inspector that's going to be hired is, a building inspector, you said, will be hired. Will that, the money to pay for that person, is it included in the bond funding?
Yes.
Or is that separate that?
No, it all comes out of the town portion of the cost of the project, which are in the project budget.
And this is a long way off, but we have swing space? Where are we going to put the kids?
We don't, we don't need swing space. That's, that's kind of the issue. If we could build new schools, we could build the schools onsite while the kids are in school. We don't have to wait for them to move out to go into the old schools and renovate them. So that's where the savings in time and potentially the savings in environmental remediation may take place.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Norris or for the consultant? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you coming out. Okay, we are on to 2018-0025, supplemental appropriation for Crystal Lake Road Reconstruction Project. And I believe we have Mr. Schneider here to talk to us about that item.
What I've included, what I've included in the package is the updates for the Crystal Lake Road reconstruction. What we are currently right now, in the construction phase right now, is where the contractor is in a winter shutdown. He's doing very minor work that's being done out there right now. And the schedule has the contractor mobilizing in full force around the April 1st to complete the project. If you've been out there, what you see is what we're going to get with traffic because they had put the islands in. They have put the, moved the traffic into the new arrangement by the main gate. So that is it. What is really missing visually is the bike path that goes from the Nollus Memorial all the way down to the intersection of Route 12 and then all the way up or down Route 12, whichever, south on Route 12, to the intersection of Country Walk Road. So that, you haven't seen there. So you haven't seen that mass there. The state of Connecticut is doing the construction administration. The town was supposed to do that. And it's a very onerous process with recording, form work, inspections and everything else in the DOT. After they found the project and saw the project and the importance of the project to the region and the state, they took on the construction inspection effort for the project. It is still a town project. It's still under our name. We're still responsible for the 10% cost share. So as I said, what I've included in the package, the first thing is the, for us engineers, it's a bunch of lines and drawings and that. We have a bigger thing, if you like. The second page is the detailed schedule. Sorry for the, how small it is, but I wanted to put it out. Sorry for how small it is, but I wanted to put it out to the council. The third page is more or less the rendering of what we have, what we will be getting when the project is completed. Project is, the fourth page is the project area. What has been done is that the state puts together a preliminary budget and that's what they had. And we had made those payments to the state of a demand deposit of a little over $500,000. Now that the project has been bid and the, all the incidentals that they're looking at and all of the issues that we had out there, there was some contaminated soil out there that had to be removed off of site, they've come up with a new budget and the balance of the demand deposit that's required from the town is $116,121. This is, would be the First Amendment to the agreement that was signed by the previous town manager for the project. What will happen is that this will get deposited with the state and then if there's any funds available after the final audit, of course, those funds come back to the town. But this is our 10% share of the project right now, which is approaching about a little under $700,000. Now, seems like a lot of money and it is a lot of money, but where we started from to resurface that road and to replace the traffic signal at the intersection of Military Highway, the sub base and Crystal Lake Road, that price was nearing $750,000 to $800,000. So for our share, we're getting a new road, a 10-foot wide bike path, all the way down to the Navy housing area, which ties into the bike path that we've already constructed on South Pleasant Valley Road and a project that is just cleans up the whole front area there. It's going to look nice when it's done. So we need authorization. It needs to go to the, of course, to the RTM. The finance director has said that there are funds available in the fund balance for this project. So that's what I have tonight and really in a nutshell. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, authorization.
I have something really quickly. Are we going to need a resolution because I don't have one in the packet?
Yeah, we'll have one put together for the actual council meeting.
So we'll just provide you direction tonight then. Okay. Counselor Rossick?
Yeah, Gary, I, excuse me, for the appropriation of the money, but I don't like the wording where it says, it must be approved.
Well, we signed agreements that we do 10% of the payment. I suppose we can ask the attorneys, but it's our 10% of the share. I suppose if it's not approved, I don't know. I would think that the state may hold up any other funding or take us to court. I mean, we agreed to a 10% match for this project. Now, that means the feds are tossing in 80% of the addition, if there's additional costs, and so is the state. And the state's throwing in some of their money too. So there's, it's, we signed an agreement and this is our share.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Schneider? Seeing none then, is there a consensus to authorize the manager to put together a resolution for a town council meeting? Any objection to that? Okay. Thank you very much. So then we are on to 2017-0307, and this is the Capital Improvement Project Updates Quarterly Report. And this is the packet of many papers that was provided for us.
As the new council came in, they asked to have a quarterly report on the CIP project. So this is the first of those. Nikki worked diligently to put together. Gary's here and might be able to answer some of your questions, but otherwise we'll, we're not going to go through the whole thing. He's just here for your information. And if you have other questions, Gary, maybe I'll answer them. Otherwise, we'll get back with you. And, you know, if there's especially a lot of questions, we can have somebody come in and focus on particular projects to give you information.
I did have one when I was, I have a lot of tiny questions, locations of certain things, et cetera. What is exactly the streetscape thing in Mystic? The one that stood out because we had discussed it before as a council was the sidewalk on Thomas Road Bike Way. And this is the original project. That was the millions and millions of dollar one. But we had talked about the lower price model, which is the repaving and then the pavement bikeways. How does that fit in with this? Is that?
Yeah, you'll be seeing something at council. We have, I believe it went through a cow for the change to eliminate that original grant. There was some question is, there might be a small bit of payback to the state for work done. I think it was what, $16,000-ish? $17,000 of payback, which isn't bad considering how long it went on. So we've got to amend that and you'll be seeing that at the next council meeting. So this is a snapshot of what's existing. So it doesn't reflect that yet.
I have the same questions you have. There's a lot of where is this? What is this? In my notes, when I read through it. So do you prefer we put those in writing and send an email to you or to?
Sure. You can send it to me and then I'll forward it and we'll get any answers.
Okay.
And again, if there's especially, you know, a project you're really interested in, we can bring somebody in and focus on that.
Are there any other specific questions about the list tonight that you want us to talk about? No? Okay, great. Thank you. So then we are on to 2018-0029, adoption of an ordinance amending various ordinances to increase fines.
And that one, we're asking to delay till the next cow. Chief Vasaro can't be here. He had, he's in the reserves and he had something he had to be at tonight. So he'll come back on the 27th if that's all right.
I think that's perfectly fine. Thank you. I'd forgotten you had told me that. Sorry. So now we are on to 2018-0043 and 2018-0044. These are the youth and family services grants. And you have information in your packet about the purpose of the grants. And then Councilors of Perry had forwarded some questions and Director Fondulis provided answers very promptly, I might add. That's what these two sheets are that you found at your place. So do you have questions or do you want to just take some time to look them over? It's your call.
And just for a quick summary, a quick synopsis, it's for a Department of Education grant for municipal youth service servicing agencies. Basically, it helps pay for some of the personnel costs to give youth counseling, those type of programs, all personnel costs. The last grant was for $26,510. We do this grant every year, the whole, I think she put in there the whole division, basically. It costs $170,000. This pays about roughly $30,000 of that.
Counselor Rossick, would you read the first resolution for us, please?
Resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for the State of Connecticut Department of Education for FYE 2019 Youth and Family Services funding. Whereas crisis intervention, prevention and support programs and short-term counseling services will benefit at-risk Grotton youths and their families. And whereas funding is available from the State of Connecticut Department of Education to supplement a portion of the salaries of the human services, Grotton Human Services Councilors who provide intervention and prevention services for at-risk Grotton youth, therefore, be it resolved that the town manager, John M. Burke, or his designate is authorized to file an application with the State of Connecticut Department of Education, DOE, for FYE 19 Municipal Youth Services funding in the amount to be determined by the DOE and to amend contractual agreements for such fundings to ensure continuation of short-term counseling, crisis intervention and prevention and support programs for Grotton youth and families. I so move.
Second, move back from Rossick. Second is Senator Parker. Any discussion or questions on the first item, which is the 0043? Counselor Zepat?
How many people are involved in the program? How many people have benefited from it?
In this, the paper that has the 0043 at the top from Director Fondulis, she's talking about, she breaks it down for you in great detail. How many children participated in the sailing program? How many participated in the child abuse prevention initiative? How many participated in the holiday distributions? So she goes through quite in depth. It's the blue ink on the page. It has 0043 at the top.
Just a couple of highlights. 50 to 60 new children each year in the counseling program. You have up to 40 people, 40 children per year max for programs such as the sailing program, those type of things, which is ages nine through high school graduation. The, you have kids who are involved in the poster contest, the child abuse prevention initiative. About 300 kids participate in that. You have special community activities such as the holiday distributions conducted by the department. They have about 35 teens from Fitch and from Grasso that participate. So there's a lot of kids involved. About two to 10 kids each year go through the juvenile review board. I don't have the total numbers over the years though. She didn't have time to poll those.
And do we have any measure of the effectiveness of the program?
They feel it's good. You know, and I haven't been involved in the program, but just like the sailing thing where I came from, we actually were responsible for a jail. We had a childcare fund where we gave alternative programs to at-risk youth. And we had an equestrian program, sort of similar to the sailing program, but with horse taking, you learn to take care of horses, that type of thing. And I know in that tracking that it greatly, they felt it greatly reduced the risk of going to jail later. So those type of programs are effective.
And the juvenile review board, it's two to 10 cases per month that they're working with the kids. So they're trying to keep them from getting into the whole legal system by dealing with them at this level.
Two to six, 10 cases per month involving misdemeanor charges. So these would be children that would be, we would take into this program and send them sailing and on overnight trips to the?
No, 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 no. No. Different group of kids.
Okay. So are these the children, are these the kids from our program that get involved in shoplifting incidents, the two to 10?
No, these are, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are, these are teenagers that have gotten in trouble in the community. And they have to be recommended to go before the juvenile review board rather than being put into the legal system. So they go through the juvenile review board to try to keep them out of the bigger picture. And the idea is you try to deal with them at the lowest level possible to get them turned around before it becomes a far worse situation.
And the only thing I want to know is, I want to know that we're spending money, hopefully to reverse the trend for these kids. Do we have objective evidence that we are reversing the trend for these kids?
I think this is something that's fairly new. I would say probably within the last maybe five years. Not really sure. Counselor, Chairperson Watson was?
It's been around for a long time. It is a national movement. It's the hope to be mediated, youth who possibly would once again become adult offenders. And it's made up of multiple different providers. I'm familiar with other towns. I'm not necessarily familiar with Grotton. Giving other alternative ways for a child to do it. In other words, what are the reasons? Trying to get to the root pieces of why a child would offend. That's the only good one.
So that would be in counseling, I gather?
No, no.
That would be in sailing?
No, I think that...
Would you like to come up? Because I'm, no, I'm really glad you're here to help out with this. But I just would like it to be captured for the people that are at home that are listening, please. Thank you. No, I'm glad you're chiming in. Thank you very much.
I'm probably misspeaking for Marge and so for that I apologize to her boss right now. But the programs such as the sailing and other programs, once again, multiple communities are, have these programs in place. Some of it, kids go to these programs on scholarships so they never, even though they live five feet from the water, 10 feet from the water, they never get the experience about what is doing in sailing. And what they're finding is, and I'm saying this as someone who makes her money for counseling, is that these, of counseling, is that people and families need multiple different ways of reaching children and youth. And so the power is in relationships. So the power is in providing these different activities where children and possibly their families are involved in activities, allowing them a different expression versus just sitting with an old fart like me, talking about their problems. That they're able to sort of do other activities, be exposed to different things, possibly find a hidden passion that they didn't know to move on. And I don't know what data gets collected in Grotton about that, but nationally, more and more programs, I think, John, you were talking about the SGRAM program. I mean, more and more communities. And in a finding, it's much more effective. I don't have the research and I don't have the stats on the top of my head.
So we don't, we don't know what we're getting out of this, what kind of progress we're making out of it?
I don't have, I don't have the data because I'm speaking from the top of my head. I don't have the data in my head. I do know that it makes a difference. I can tell you anecdotally, it makes a difference when you pair a child up with an activity, give them a relationship, give them a healthy way of doing something to support them and to support their family. You can't go wrong. You just can't go wrong.
Perhaps what we can do is we can ask Director Fondulis if she can find out if they have any evidence to back up the efficacy of the programs.
Is that before we vote on this?
Well, we're going to, we would vote tonight and then this will have to come through council. So the final vote would take place in council. So I'm sure Director Fondulis could have that for us before the council vote. They'll take a preliminary vote this evening in the cow and then it'll go to the council.
The only thing I would say as we're talking about this is there are many people in the town paying taxes who can't afford to send their children to sailing schools, who can't afford to send their children to an overnight on the Conrad. Yet they're paying taxes and that tax money is being used to send children who have not performed well or as well as their children have in society. And they're being rewarded for that at the expense of the people whose children are doing the right thing. I just want to know, and I think they want to know, that by making this sacrifice and by paying for that, are we actually changing the course of the lives of these children that we're intervening with? Are we actually changing them away from an antisocial behavior pattern? And there must be some data that would support that. And I think that as we spend money here, we would like to know that what we're spending the money of our taxpayers for is actually being accomplished.
Okay. Thank you, Counselors of Perry. Counselor Parker would like to speak.
May I read what she's written here so that the audience, as well as everyone watching TV, Marge Fondulis has written, I hope I say this right?
Recidivism.
Recidivism rate for youth and family services. Clients is low. Approximately 8% of clients return for service at a later date and most of the time, the presenting problem is different than the previous presenting problem. High school graduation rates have not been tracked. Satisfaction surveys are completed by clients and parents at conclusion of counseling sessions. So they're not only getting, they're getting counseling, it's two separate issues. The sailing program is a separate thing from the juvenile review board. Juvenile review board is when they get in trouble and multiple people are involved with it, the police department, the schools. They all try to figure out the best path for that child so they can stay out of trouble. It's a great program. There are many people have probably gone through it. I cannot give you rates. Marge isn't not here tonight, so she would be the best person to answer that. But on the same token, there are a lot of kids who have gone through and there are some I do know. Being, helping out in the community, I tend to learn a few things. It's helped them a lot. The kids have told me. So taking away something that helps the community, it wouldn't be a good idea.
Are there any other counselors who'd like to speak on this issue? So seeing no other discussion tonight, and we could ask that Director Fondulis be present at the council meeting when this comes up. That way, if we have further questions, we can ask. Is there, let's have a vote on, get the number back, excuse me, 2018-0043, Department of Education Youth and Family Services funding. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstaining? So that passed seven, one to zero. Thank you. Counselor Parker, would you? Councilor Parker, would you take us to two zero one eight zero zero four four, please, which is another grant?
Whereas the State of Connecticut Department of Education offers Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program funding to municipally-based Connecticut youth services programs for supplies and related expenses connected with programs and activities which directly and indirectly benefit Groton youth and families in areas such as youth enrichment, outreach programs, general support, and positive youth development. And whereas Groton Human Services has demonstrated its success in providing youth enrichment, outreach programs, general support, and positive youth development, therefore be it resolved that the town manager, John M. Bird, or his designated is authorized to apply for, apply for and contract with the State of Connecticut Department of Education, DOE, for fiscal year nineteen Youth Services Bureau Enhancement Grant Program funding in an amount to be determined by the DOE. I so move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Heed. And again, Director Fondulis provided responses to Counselors of Perry's questions. This goes into a little bit more detail about the programs and there's an offer on the back. That there, yes, that there is more information available if needed. And it mentions former city chief Bruno Jellini in this. I believe this is the one with sailing, Joe.
I think the two sides of the same coin.
Well, this one is the sailing, she says it.
Sure.
So I think it will, it's, it's good that Director Fondulis put this together for us. We haven't really had a chance to read this over yet though, this evening. But we can choose to move this forward and ask further questions when it gets to the council meeting, if you're comfortable doing that. Are there any questions? Okay. So let's vote to move forward twenty eighteen zero zero four four. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And abstaining? So that passed seven to one to zero, with Counselors of Perry opposed. And that leads us to twenty eighteen zero zero four five Personnel Appointments Committee, twenty eighteen regular meeting schedule.
Resolution approving revised two thousand eighteen Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule. Be resolved at the Town Council hereby amends resolution two thousand seventeen zero two six two and approves the Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule for the remainder of two thousand eighteen as follows.
Shall I read every date? Ms. Breslin, does she need to read every date?
No, no, just the, the bottom is fine. So just a little paragraph at the bottom explains.
Okay. All meetings begin at five thirty in the Community Room One at Town Hall Annex one thirty-four, Groton Long Point Road in the, on the third Tuesday of each month. I so move.
Second. Moved by Franco. We'll let Heed second since this has committed. Any discussion?
The purpose for moving the meeting is opposed to having it before the Town Council meeting and then having to wait a whole month to vote on the personnel recommendations. The, you know, you move it into the middle of the month and then you get to vote on it two weeks later. So it just speeds up the process a little bit.
If there's no other discussion, we'll vote on two zero one eight zero zero four five Personnel Appointments Committee regular meeting schedule. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? That moved unanimously, eight zero zero. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess before we get to the last item on the agenda. So we will be back at seven thirty. Thank you. Okay, so we're back in session and we are on item twenty seventeen zero two two six. And this is the standing referral for the Superintendent of Groton Public Schools update. So this evening, we have a full table. We have Dr. Grenier, Chairperson Watson, and the rest of the board as well as staff. So thank you all for coming out to talk to us tonight.
Thank you. And I, I also just wanted to say thank you for many of you attending yesterday's or last night's conversation. I thought it was great and I thought that we had a really neat dialogue as we continue to do our journey in the budget world so that in two and a half weeks, we are able to, to provide you guys with our budget. So, thank you.
Well, if, we, thank you. At last night's meeting, a few questions came up, so we have provided a little packet of information that I hope will answer a number of the, the questions from, from last night. It's a packet. Everybody should take one, please. Because there, there's some information about the other post-employment benefits and a few things that came up last night, I think would be helpful for everyone to... So let me, let me start by orienting the Town Council first to the timeline. The, the board, the board has been meeting since the first week of January where they, they looked at a budget partly because we didn't have the FY eighteen budget until quite late. It was, in fact, it was well into January before we actually got the FY eighteen budget. And of course, the FY eighteen budget is, is then the foundation for the FY nineteen budget. So the, the board admittedly was, was a bit late in, in the whole process. But the board and I and staff have, have met virtually every week, sometimes twice a week, to, to pull this together. It, so let me, let me direct your attention to this, this very first sheet, but it's a, it's really a nice summary of, of the budget. And if you go all the way down to the very bottom on line fifty-eight, you, you'll see that the, the budget, the little yellow box, is projected to be a two-point-six percent increase or one million nine hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine. That number, that number began at, at least at the board level at four percent and consistently chipped down and Counselor Franco has been with us pretty much the whole time. And we, we, the board, cut, cut about two hundred fifty to three hundred fifty thousand dollars per night. We, we, we actually went through it somewhat systematically. And, and so I'll just orient you very quickly. Line eight is a summary of the salary accounts. So there's a one-point-four percent increase, projected increase in the salary account. Although our salary agreements by and large reflect about two percent, there is, we are projecting a, a decrease in some FTEs and so the, the amount is, is less than, than the two percent. Line eleven is, is of course the huge problem that we face. It, it is more than two million dollars. It's, it's one-point-seven million dollars for health insurance and two hundred eighty-six thousand for other benefits. And those other benefits are our pension contribution, which we've already paid, that's not a projection, and our workers' comp claims. Again, that's, that's a bill, that's an actual claim that we've already paid. So if you, if you look at line eleven and then you, you look way down to line fifty-eight, you'll see that the whole budget increase is less than the health insurance. So the budget itself is less than zero. It's just that the health insurance unfortunately is too high. And then if you look at line twenty-one, you'll see there are some purchase services and I, I can go through these in, in detail, but those are basically services, special education, occupational, physical therapy, professional services like neurological evaluations and so forth. Our property line twenty-six is basically the repair and rental account. We've been able to reduce that by a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars. Line thirty-seven is actually is a compilation of everything from transportation, but if, I'll direct your attention to line twenty-seven. It's four-point-seven million dollars to transport five thousand children around this town a, and to take them to other towns. So it's a, it's a significant, we realize it's a significant chunk of money. But anyway, you'll see that, that, that goes up by two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars or, or two percent. Our supply account, we cut significantly. In fact, there's more than a half a million dollar cut on, on line fifty-one because we cut the side budgets across the board by twenty-five percent. We, the board spent a lot of time on this account and we, we were down to cutting five and ten thousand dollars here and there. The equipment account, again, we took every single thing that we could and reduced that by four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Some of that will be picked up, a little bit will be, will be picked up by the Department of Defense Supplemental Impact Aid. Some of it was, we, when the Town Council returned the, returned the budget back to zero, to the one-point-five million, we used some of those funds to purchase the computers for students and teachers. So that was a balance there. And then line fifty-seven is dues. The, the board has opted not to join the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed, unfortunately. But, you know, we cut everything, basically, we cut everything that we thought would not have a significant impact on children. And so let me, let me march my way through this and then maybe we could come back and... So the, the next couple of pages, the front page is literally a summary and you're going to get a book after, we, we will submit the book on the twenty-seventh of, of February. You're going to get a book that will basically start with this summary and then the next several pages are the details of the front page. And then we're going to, we're going to give you not only what the, the, the object codes are, but we'll give you the function codes. So if you want to know, what do we pay for the art program? What are we paying for the soccer team or whatever? It's, it's, that's the super detail. I guess the budget, I don't know, can be about maybe forty pages, fifty pages or so. So we'll, we'll give you all that, but, but we're not finished, of course, because we, we continue to cut the budget. The board continues to cut the budget.
Yes, let's be clear, we have not voted on it. So the number of the two-point-six, two-point-six is what we have until on Wednesday and we have another conversation and then it's on the following Mondays, then when we have the vote. So this is, that's a, the two-point-six is a, is a moving number.
And, and last night, we proposed a, a few cuts and, but the board did not agree with some of them. So I normally would have presented what happened last night. I, I think it's fair to say we, we, we agreed, the board agreed last night to about ninety-five thousand dollars worth of cuts, but there was a debate about field trips and debate about some videographer salary that we wanted to protect. So Wednesday night, we'll revisit those things. We, we could talk a little bit about schoolology and we can talk about some security accounts. I have some information about that. But I, I, I think Wednesday night, a week from tomorrow, which will be the, the final budget workshop, I would anticipate maybe another seventy-five thousand. It, it will bring the budget down in the neighborhood of three-point-three, two, two-point-three. Freudian slip. So anyway, so, so that's that. So let, let me keep marching here through your packet.
So just to, just for clarification, because not all of us were partied last night together, if you call that a party, is, is that I think that Dr. Grenier did come prepared, wanted to show the front page, but also did come, there was some questions that we thought we could get answered that you and Ken. And so maybe we could ask, you know, just make sure we, we know what the question is and then, and then go to those and then entertain whatever. It's your, Mayor, it's your, it's your meeting, but I just kind of want to, I always like to get framed in what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you. So I got an answer today to the suggestion that I had made last night and it's not doable as far as the OPEB money because the school board handles it differently than, than the town does. The, the town has the ongoing costs in one pot that we contribute to every year and then we also have a reserve pot that we're kicking into for long-term goals, whereas the Board of Ed just has the ongoing pot. So there's, there's no spare, yes, and Dr. Grenier has it here, there's no spare money that could be held up for this year. And then I also believe that Board Member Whiteloff's suggestion about the health insurance, our finance director also counseled that that was probably not wise at this point.
About, about the stop loss?
Yes, about the stop loss. I believe that is, Mr. Burr, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, we were still looking at what the actual amounts are. Does school have, did we figure out that it's two hundred and fifty thousand for the stop loss?
They're getting back to me tomorrow.
Okay. But I, I'm not sure it's wise to go be, you know, higher than that.
So, so those two things-
Or lower. Or even lower.
Lower, sorry.
So those two big items are kind of off the table at this point and then everything else, if you want to just go through-
Sure.
-the discretionary funding, et cetera.
One of the things we-
Thank you. Thank you.
One of the things we talked about last night was page one, one dash three is the colored chart. We, this will be part of your budget book, so we extracted it, but based upon where we are right now, if you, if you look at the Board of Education budget, seventy-seven-point-nine percent of it consists of salary and benefits. That's, that's true of virtually every school district in the country. Most of what is, what is included in a school board budget are, are salaries of everything from teachers to administrators to bus drivers to paraprofessionals, what have you. And then the other accounts, tuition is eight-point-six, that's the next, the biggest. That includes tuition that we pay for children who, for whom we do not have an appropriate special education program. So we send children to the American School for the Deaf, for example, in Newington. There are, it, this is all through the special education process. We also send students, which is why we are in the process of expanding middle schools. Southeastern Connecticut has a, a, a lot of magnet school choice opportunities. New England Public Schools is a hundred percent magnet. And so when children go there, we have to pay about three thousand dollars per child and we have to provide special education services for those children. We don't have to provide transportation. But we also have children go to the Regional Multicultural Magnet School and the Dual Language Academy and, and New England Science, Science and Tech. So we knew that school choice was, was very popular. In fact, when I first got here, the, the tuition bill was two-point-four million. And so one of the things that we've tried to do is expand the one magnet school that we have, which is Kathryn Kolnowski, that I was speaking to the principal today, thirty-six percent of the children who attend Kathryn Kolnowski's steam magnet are, are magnet school students. That is to say, they do not live in that neighborhood. It's a hugely popular school. Two years ago, we started a, a magnet school at Northeast Academy Performing Arts. About fifteen percent of the children now attending that school. Both schools have waiting lists. So we are, we have reduced the amount of out-of-district tuition, but that, that's not the only amount in tuition. The next, highest amount of transportation, as I mentioned, we have a bus company, STA, Student Transportation of America, that provides a bus service in town, in Groton. And we have a service, curtain delivery service that provides transportation for special education students who leave town. They also provide transportation for homeless students that have a right to come back to, to their home district, even though they no longer reside, at least temporarily, within town. And somebody asked me last night, what's the discretionary funds? That's that little, little yellow sliver there. There, there's not a lot of discretionary. So when we talk about cutting the budget, you know, I guess the blunt answer is if we're going to cut the budget significantly, you have to cut staff. And I'll, I'll talk about what happened last year with the staff. The next page is, is a page that actually the Town, Town Finance Department, HR Department helped me with. And I'll just, I won't bore you with all the facts, but it, but if, if you look at the, the second line down, actuarial value of ass- down, actuarial value of assets, the Town has $17 million of assets because it has been paying for this future potential and current liability since 2007, and there's quite a bit of money in that. And it's almost like a health insurance pension, is the way I, but anyway. The Board has not built up a particularly large amount, in that it's $668,000 in the whole. That's a, I think, that's a hypothetical, if, you know, if all the retired people got sick at the same time, we could have that sort of liability. So the new accounting rules say that we really have to pay this. And so we met with the staff, and if you go down to the Board of Ed column, second from the bottom, the expected payouts this year are $786,960. We have included that in the budget. That's why the health insurance is so large. We have about a 7, 5 to 7 percent of claims experience of the active employees that we have, plus we have this 786. So that's what, if you went back to the front page, you'll notice it's 1.7 increase. It's 1 for the active employees, and it's 0.7 for the post-employment benefits. The next page is a little bit about stop loss. That is to say, well, it's the same for, it is, in fact, the Towns, the Towns and the schools. When someone, when someone makes a medical claim, the Town pays that. It's a self-insured plan. We pay through Anthem, but it's actually the Town's money. It's not true insurance. But true insurance kicks in once it gets, once the claim gets to $200,000. That's stop loss. And of course, it could go far higher than 200,000 in some cases, unfortunately. And so this insurance is that, stop loss, and we were fiddling with the possibility, and we'll get the answer tomorrow, that maybe we could change our stop loss amount. Not, say, 200,000, but what if we stopped at 150,000? What would happen to the other, the regular claim?
Counselor.
Just to note that if you reduce it, you're actually going to pay more. So you want to put higher to save money.
Right, right. Well, we'll leave that in your hands to do the analysis, but we certainly, Mr. Whiteloff's idea was, maybe we could save, lower on the stop loss, and maybe the differential would be with the regular non-stop loss insurance. But we'll wait for that analysis to be done. And then the last thing I'll say, because it came up last night, and it's come up in a few conversations, is what happened to this year's budget? So here's what happened to it. Last February, a year ago, right around this time, the Board approved the budget of $77,745,293, a 1.67 percent increase. It then went to the Town, to Town Council, and then to the RTM, and what was approved was $74,900,000. So the Board had to reduce, and we did reduce, $2,845,293. So we were 2.0, in round numbers, 2.8 in the hole. So how did we cut 2.8? Well, we cut it in lots of ways, but fortunately, because of the Alliance District, the Town being held harmless, the ECS, the Education Cost Sharing Grant, instead of being reduced to what was a projected 20 million, actually came in at 25 million. It came in flat. There was no reduction. And so because of that, the expectation, or there would have been a penalty, as you know, because you approved it, is that the Board's budget would be restored back to zero, which is $1,568,239. So that's what we've done. So the question is, after that, where was the money that was saved? Because when we closed Pleasant Valley School, we let go 18 teaching positions, one secretary, one principal, two custodians, and that's the, in round numbers, 1.3 million. Make sense? I hope. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So if we have questions, if we could just go in order, kind of like we do when we're over there. So anyone have questions for Dr. Ginear?
That's it for my packet. We'd be happy to answer questions on anything.
Thank you. No questions?
Counselor Schmidt. I think you're saying that in order to stay at a zero increase, you're going to have to again fire 18 teachers, one principal, and an additional secretary and two custodians, in addition to the ones that were.
More than that, because we would have to cut 1.8 million.
Right.
So, and of course, we don't have any more schools to close. Because last year, when the Board made the decision to close the school, we had to place 305 students who were at Pleasant Valley School. And so what we did was we created, we moved programs around a good bit, but we created about 100 slots at Mary Morrison School, about 80 slots at Charles Barnum. And so we, and we took a whole neighborhood from, actually, one of the military neighborhoods, we moved them over to S.B. Butler. So if you go to S.B. Butler at dismissal time, you see a bunch of people in uniform. That's not common. That's because we took about 40 children and put them in S.B. Butler. So the schools are pretty jam-packed.
Right.
Well, very jam-packed.
And our magnets really filled up.
Right, that's right. Another 100 or so children went to the magnet. So if we were, if we were to, if we had to make significant cut, closing a school is not an option. But I will say this, in the fall of 2020, well, you heard the presentation tonight, and I finally saw pictures of that building, which is so exciting. But in the fall of 2020, when those schools had come together, there would be a significant consolidation of staff. Basically, to make it simple, each school has two sixth-grade teams of about 150, 160 students. When the two schools come together, there will be about 300 students, and there will be three teams of about 100. And therefore, one whole team, four teachers per grade, about 12 teachers, will no longer be employed. We won't need two librarians. We won't need two, you know, you can use your imagination.
With the new magnet schools, what's going on?
The magnet teams will continue.
On Westside and Cutler? Those will have to be staffed?
Well, what will happen is this, in the fall of 2020, all the children from Westside and all the children from Cutler will come together. But instead of it being four teams, it will be three teams.
I get all that.
Yeah. And then the two schools.
The empty schools will now.
We found out last week that the Cutler School, that we fought hard to have as a diversity school, so we get 80 percent funding, we were so much surprised to be told by the Department of Administrative Services that we can build a new school. In fact, we will build a new school, 80 percent funding for a brand-new school. And because it will be a new school that we will build right next to the current Cutler, we won't have to wait for Cutler to be evacuated, which means we could build it about a year and a half earlier and save significant money.
I don't think that's the question that Counsel Franko was asking you. Do you want to clarify, please? So the teachers that are going to be in Cutler and Westside?
Yes, they'll come to the middle school.
And then who are you going to, those are going to become new schools?
Those, no.
You know what I'm saying? Am I not saying it right?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm with you. S.B. Butler and Claude Chester, they will move into the new, most of them, move into the new Cutler Elementary, and the other students will move into the new Westside, and that's how that will happen.
So like, S.B. Butler and Claude Chester will be vacant?
Knocked down.
We will not need them anymore.
Correct. That's 2020.
And actually, I'm sorry. And if Pleasant Valley wasn't closed, Pleasant Valley was slated to be that third elementary school. So it would be S.B. Butler, Claude Chester, and Pleasant Valley would become vacant. But Pleasant Valley now is vacant because we did that to do that.
Save money earlier.
Yeah.
So we'll go from 10, we'll go from 10 schools, or just a few years ago, 14 schools, to eight. And when you, as you can imagine, fewer schools means much greater consolidation and efficiency.
Counselor Parker?
Two questions. I'm going to ask you to explain the diversity portion of that for Cutler. And two, I don't think the gentleman said that, I think there's going to be a study done before they do that.
That's right.
So we're not sure if that's going to be a brand-new school or not. That's what he told us tonight.
Cutler?
Can I help?
Well, that's it.
Can I help?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Yeah. So I think that, Dr. Ginear, what Counselor Parker is talking about is that prior to your arrival, they had a huge presentation about that information, and I think, and I kind of came in on the tail end, but my understanding is that they talked about a study. So I don't think it's.
To see which would be cheaper.
Right.
That makes sense.
Right. So I think, I think we're just so excited about the projects that I, and the information is so fluid. I get a phone call maybe four or five times a day from this man, and information is different from the first phone call to the fourth phone call. So I think that we're just exuberant about the possibility of what we're going to do.
I just didn't want everyone watching to get confused.
I, so I was about ready to say it, so thank you very much.
And can you explain why Cutler's a diversity?
Cutler's a diversity school because in the spring of 2014, Claude Chester School was identified as being out of racial balance. And we were given a few months to put a plan together to redraw the district lines or whatever. And so we had a group of people, a couple of them are here, a stakeholder group that met here, and we came up with a plan partly to deal with the one middle school that had been in a referendum that had not passed, and partly to deal with what was widespread dissatisfaction with redrawing of the school lines. So we came up with this idea that there could be one middle school, and that one middle school could be built next to the high school, and that the two schools, we assumed, would be renovated. And one of them could include the students from Claude Chester, which is old and costly to maintain, and many of the students from S.B. Butler, and we would be eligible if it became a magnet school. And so we pursued it, actually Senator Summers was really instrumental, and Representative Winkler. And so once the referendum passed, it went in as a renovated school, but we petitioned because the school that will replace Claude Chester, that's the racially, that's the one school that was out of racial balance, that made us eligible for a diversity.
Weren't there more schools, weren't there more schools on that list that were out of balance?
No.
Just that one?
No.
So when we closed off Fitch Middle, I still call Fitch Junior in my head, sorry. When we closed down Fitch Middle, that didn't help with the racial balance because of the elementary school kids. Going through the Scotten Public School system, I've heard this for 40-plus years.
Yes.
So it has not changed. So if we get an influx of more minorities in the group, are we going to end up being racially imbalanced?
Yeah, imbalanced, no. That was the exact argument that I made to the state, because Groton has been dealing with racial imbalances for at least 40 years. And the way you are eligible, the way a municipality is eligible, very few municipalities get this, and it was an additional $10.4 million, is you have to show that you had a plan, you implemented the plan, and it failed. In Groton's case, of course, it failed several times. A month before Katherine Kolnowski was due to open, it was already out of racial balance. That is to say, the school that replaced Eastern Point, which was out of racial balance, which is why they built Kolnowski, before Kolnowski even opened, it was out of racial balance, and they delayed it. And the way they achieve racial balance is the way we're going to achieve racial balance with the two new, new or renovated elementary schools through school choice. And that's how, that's how New England Public Schools achieved racial balance, that's how, any magnet school. If we, by 2022, we will have four elementary schools that are school choice, so people will be able to go to any of them, and we will, we will be able to achieve racial balance through that process.
And when you say "school choice," my assumption is that you mean magnet schools?
Yes.
And it's for the district? It's not out of district?
Intra-district.
It's scary, it's scary. I am starting to read.
My face.
But I, I'm sorry, but I just want to say, I really appreciate you bringing back that question about diversity and stuff. Many of us have been living in this for such a long time that we forget the history, and so I think it's really important because there's so many people who don't understand about how we got to this journey. They just are joining us on the journey right now, and there's a huge history. So I really appreciate that. Sorry, Mayor.
I just wondered how they determine racial balance? Who decides there is a balance of so many Spanish-speaking, Chinese, Asian, white, European?
It's the state, this is very painful. We spent a lot of time in the legislature trying to fight over this. But anyway, the answer to your question is, it's the State Department of Education. We submit our, on October 1st, the enrollment data, and we indicate the gender and the race and so forth of the children. And so what the State Department does, what the law says the State Department will do is get the average for the district. The average of our district of children of color is 43 percent. And so you, no school can be greater than 25 percent of that average, or 68 percent, or lower than 43, by 25 percent. They give you that 25 percent range. And if you, if you fall out of that, then you're out of racial balance. The painful thing for Groton was, when I first got here, the Commissioner gave me six months to put the plan together. We put the plan together, and the State Department accepted it. The next October, we were in racial balance. But we went ahead with the plan. The next October, we were in racial balance again, but we petitioned because we used to be out of racial balance, and Chairman Watson and I spent a long time in the legislature. And lo and behold, they pulled the bill on us because we were in racial balance. And then a year ago, right after the referendum passed, they don't determine it on October 1st, it takes them a little while, but no sooner did the referendum pass than they did the racial analysis, and we were out of racial balance, which meant we were eligible for the $10.4 million. We had to fight for it, but thank God we were eligible for it. So that's where we are. It's a bit of a, a bit of a moving target, because, the other answer to your question is, pretty much, the way the law reads, it's white students and everybody else. and, and everybody else. Uh, that's to say, Asian students, Hispanic students, African-American students, Indian students, wha, those are considered non-white, it's white and non-white. And that's the way the, the law reads.
Thank you.
Counselor Heath?
I have three, excuse me, sir, I have three questions for you. I noticed on the, um, well, the biggest net is, obviously, the insurance. You've invited seventeen, um, companies to put in bids, three put in bids, three declined. What's the status on the other ones?
I, I would have to, we, we, I, I believe those were bids on, uh, on the stop-loss insurance.
Correct.
Uh, can you, did you hear the question?
We did the stop-loss last year.
I think the stop-loss was bid last year, yeah.
Last year was it? They, we have a consultant, MDG, is our consultant for, uh, insurance, and, uh, one of the things I tasked him with is constantly rebidding a lot of the areas. They had just taken over from, we had Aon about two or three years ago, and what we had really experienced was kind of same-old, same-old, and there was no change in bidding or anything like that. So, uh, one of the big things we found, that we brought in, uh, MDG, was the fact that, uh, they had shown there was a million-dollar profit from Anthem on stop-loss from us. So that was one of the key tipping points that actually gave me, you know, a shot at saying, okay, how much can you save if we go to, you know, let's go to a different consultant, let's see people that are bidding out life insurance, um, um, the, uh, the prescriptions, and all of the other rest of the things that, uh, you know, they're not really premiums. But what really hurts us the most is these are claim-driven. So, we, our claims exception hasn't been the greatest, and that's been what's really driven the price the most. But as far as the stop-loss goes, um, we have a, a study going on a- after today, just to see if there is a, a difference, it's gonna help us out if they go from two-twenty-five down to a hundred and fifty. If they do go down that low, two-hundred-and-fifty, we have to recheck to make sure that we're not be making it up in premium. And that'll be the study on, on the claims, that's how that plays out. But, uh, I tasked them, I'm probably on the phone with MDG almost every day, it's, we really do watch them a lot, and we're pushing them on constantly, uh, rebidding everything we can. And if there was other options out there as far as other carriers, you know, right now, where we are in southern, uh, southeastern Connecticut, we haven't had any real, um, competition with some of the carriers we've had now. So, that's kind of had our hands a little bit tied, that you're dealing with one, one carrier. So, uh, we, we just gotta keep working on this and, uh, try to really, we've, we've implemented the high deductible health plan, I think that's, that's gonna help us a lot because what it really comes down to is you really have to, the way we're gonna achieve things are gonna be by managing, it's a managing care of yourself, that's what it really comes down to. So, we have seeded them in many items, you know, the deductible, but by and large, the real thing is to look at, you know, how do you prevent things? In other words, we don't wanna tell people, we want you to stay on to your deductible, so that we don't want you getting the proper medication, so you don't advance to a, a worse disease, because if you do that, then we end up with higher claims there. So, at least we're kind of looking on that side to kind of encourage them to go to doctors, find out what's going on, because, uh, if you're over fifty years old, and you have a, uh, a history of, uh, colon cancer, it's a great thing to know that the doctor's gonna give you a colonoscopy and try to arrest some of these things at the, at the lower level. The same thing is with diabetes, you know, that's becoming really huge, there's, you know, unlimited people have diabetes now, and we're trying to, if you get them on the right, uh, program, and you get them on the right medication, you may not get into those real expensive, uh, expensive drugs, that you really have to get to the insulin, and then finally, we know all the effects that happen with diabetes, you know, advances, and many people don't know they have it. So I mean, that's, uh, we're watching it, there's no question about it, but it's, uh, it's, it's quite a hurdle, and it's, it's not, it's not gonna be fixed real quick, but we're gonna do everything we can to watch it every day.
All right, thank you. Um, the second question is, um, on this page here.
Sure.
Uh, under total BOE, it's six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-nineteen is a negative. I didn't understand your explanation on that.
I, I must confess, I was saying to the board last night, the first time I heard the acronym OPEB was about thirty days ago, uh, Other Post-Employment Benefits. I, I think, and maybe Bob or John or Cindy can help me, I think, uh, the, the reason, if you go to the town, that there's, there's seventeen million, is that the town has been contributing to this, uh, in anticipation of this potential liability that they have. And, and the, the amount that is, has been paid out for the other post-employment benefits, uh, the, the, the board's account has not been deducted. It's actually, it, it, the deduction is actually made by the town, they, they sent us, uh, basically an invoice. Uh, so that's my understanding, and that if we pay the seven-eighty-six, nine-sixty, uh, those are the expected claims. Uh, we might do a little better than that, or we might do a little bit worse than that, and I think next year, uh, we'll be back talking about OPEB, and hopefully that, that six-sixty-eight number is, is, is gonna go down. I mean, the, the law basically says that the municipality has this po, future li, not potential, it has a future liability, and you really ought to be paying into it. And, and tha, that's my understanding, and I, 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 this, this is a page from about a fifteen or twenty-page book. And unfortunately, Mrs. Lapine is not with us tonight, uh, she wasn't able to make it. Uh, she, she's our HR person, and she has a little bit of her head on this.
All right, um, I get it now. Thank, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, final question, um, under, you had mentioned equipment was going down, but what about the supplies? So textbooks, professional materials, maintenance supplies, how are instructional supplies, how are these going down?
Uh, let me, six-hundred, uh, again, yeah. Instructional supplies, that, if you go to the second column from the left, six-oh-one to six-nineteen, six-twenty-two, six-twenty-three, six-twenty-eight, those are object codes. Uh, those are basically all the site budgets, and, uh, the, the, the schools, uh, ea, each elementary school gets about fifty, five-oh-thousand dollars to, to run the school, paper, pencils, basketballs, you, you name it, not, not salary, of course. Um, and so we, we basically said to the principals, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, I said to the principals, I, I think, because the, the budget, i- if it stands at one-point-nine million, it, it used to, used to stand, uh, about nearly four million, and the principal said to me, if you cut anything, don't cut staff, we desperately need the staff, uh, so cut the, cut the supplies, and basically they'll, they'll make do. Uh, textbooks, uh, and, and workbooks, be, because of the one-point-five million dollars that was restored this year, uh, we were able to do lots of classroom libraries, and, and we're, we're restocking the, uh, the schools right now, a- as we speak. Um, the forty-eight thousand dollars, eh, eh, maintenance supplies, and Mr. Kilpatrick is, is, is here, and he basically went through his budget with a fine-tooth comb and, and, and cut as much as possible. Um, so those were the, those were the, so part of it is cutting of, of, of the, the two big parts are cut, cutting the, the site budgets, and, uh, we, we also picked up some, uh, some at, one time, I'm afraid, but we picked up six-hundred-thousand dollars in, in Alliance money, uh, and, uh, Ms. Lawson put a budget together, about two-hundred-thousand of that was for, uh, books and, uh, classroom libraries. So, it, it looks like we're taking, uh, well, we are reducing the budget significantly, but we believe we're gonna be able to afford all the materials that, that we need for next year.
All right, thank you very much.
And, and if I could just go back, I, I, I think I confused everybody with, uh, with the question about what we're doing with the schools. I, I, I do wanna highlight again what I was trying to say, that when the schools get combined, when the faculty of Westside and the faculty of Cutler come together, there will be significant savings to, to the salary account. The two middle school, uh, the, the two middle schools, when they get renovated or built, uh, th- those elementary faculties, they will just go to those respective schools, so there won't be any savings there. But there will be significant savings, or cost, cost reduction, a better way of saying it, I think, uh, when those two schools get consolidated. Uh, so, this budget and, and next budget, the, this being nineteen, and, and next one being FY twenty, uh, is gonna be very difficult. Uh, the, the budget after that, uh, there, there will be a dip, uh, because we will be able to, uh, reduce the, the salary accounts somewhat significantly. Uh, and then when we, when we, uh, bring in the, the two elementary schools, uh, there, there will, there will be savings. But then, that's, that's another two-year out, so.
And we are in Alliance for five years, which means that we'll be held harmless and be able to get that ECS funding, you know, for the next five years. So, in a sense, it's, you know, something that really is of value to us, and we're working hard to make sure that we make those improvements we need to make.
Uh, do any of the other counselors who haven't spoken yet have questions for the superintendent or the board?
Thank you. Um, as far as moving forward with this, um, I'm going to ask that as soon as we are done with the budget, um, that we start working on shared services, um, for next year, because it's gonna take months in order to get anything done. And, um, I'm sure we all have ideas about what we could do, but I would like to appoint a, a group of counselors, and I hope that you would come to the table, and we could sit together, and perhaps we could brainstorm first, and then when the manager is done with the budget with the RTM, then we could call them in and say, okay, what's feasible? You know, we have these ideas, what will work? And your business director, um, the town staff can all sit together then, and we can get moving on forward with that, that way, next budget, hopefully, we can see maybe some restructuring and some, some savings for next year. But it's too late in the budget process right now to do any of the shared services, so that's just something that we have to kind of look forward to as, as a potential savings for next time, so. Yes?
Um, ju, we, there had been a whole bunch of work that has been done as well, in terms of just kind of gathering information, in terms of what other towns and districts. I mean, I think about my good friend Katrina, who does lots of research and, and lots of digging around, and so, uh, that would be really helpful information, I think, to have. And, and I'm not quite sure if the, both the town council and the board are aware of the fact that, um, soon after, um, our town manager arrived, um, he and Dr. Gannier have been, have been working very closely, um, together, but also working really closely on this, on the subject about how to combine services, um, you know, where are those, where are those spaces and places that we're already doing work, um, together, and where are some of the cost savings? And so, um, already to the credit to the town manager and to, um, the superintendent, um, much more to be done, but the, the work has, um, the work has started and, and is pretty, is, is pretty cool, if I can say that, in my adolescent way.
You may say that. All right. Uh, does anyone else wanna say anything? If not, thank you very much, we appreciate, oh, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm-
Chairperson Watson?
So sorry.
That's all right.
So, um, I, I do have a-
Welcome to our world.
Yeah. That's my line. Um, I have two things. One is, um, one of the things that I have, ever since I've been on the board, that I have found really helpful, is to really kind of get a sense, um, from the town council about what are they're thinking about what our budget should look like. I know you guys don't have a magic wand, but, um, and not that, not that the board would agree or not to agree, but I think sometimes, and I might be speaking for myself, and so I will, I will own that, um, but a benchmark, so that's, that's one, that's, that's my, my other question, and you guys are more than welcome to kind of think about it and kind of come back, but in two weeks, you guys are gonna have the budget anyways. Um, uh, and that's by charter. Um, the second is, um, and Lee, I'm not trying to steal your thunder, um, but one of the things that you brought up last night, um, and, but it has been something that, I think that many of our board members, um, have been looking forward to, is, um, re, reigniting that liaison committee that existed between the town council, the Board of Ed, the city council, and the RTM. Um, it was a monthly meeting, it was an, I think it was an hour in length.
Exactly.
It was sixty minutes.
Sixty minutes, um, from someone who shall not be named. Um, and, um, but it was a way for those, for those, those bodies to really kind of say, hey, what's going on here? Um, you know, I, I think one of the, one of the things that kind of struck me is that, um, it was through this liaison committee that we found out that an apartment complex was being built. Well, apartment complexes could have something, could have a, a great impact on town, but also could have a great impact, um, on the school district. And so what are, what are some of those things in, in those places? And so, I, I do, I do believe that it's, it's such an important, um, group, um, and so I do know that it comes through the town council, and so, but I just wanted to throw my plug in, um, that we were, that I, I think the board itself felt it was a, a very important process. Sorry to steal your thunder, Lee.
You didn't.
All right, yes?
I just wanna say thank you very much for, for having us, um, and for all having us all at this table.
I think you're garden.
Thanks, everyone. Children's scene. Trailing with us. Yes, please.
I am, um, the newbie in the group, and so very often I find myself listening and hesitating as to whether it's the proper time to, um, say anything or not. So tonight, I, I missed a moment that I just want to revisit. When we were talking about Juvenile Review Board, um, one topic, and secondly, the sailing program in Groton, um, I have lived with the, uh, the man who, um, has been active in both of these as police chief and volunteer in Groton for many years. Um, my experience as educator brought me also into the Juvenile Review Board, um, in this case at Ram Middle School. Um, it was, these groups are extremely important, whether it be Ram in Hebron, or whether it be Groton, um, the committee is made up of volunteers. So Mr. Talbot was on the committee, uh, Bruno was on the committee as police chief, they volunteered their time, and they worked to solve problems that kids were having, and determined what could be done. So for example, in Groton, what if a kid moved in, uh, Navy family, pulled away from somewhere else, maybe parents dividing up, chaos. Um, they worked together to sort out what could be done to help that kid become part of the community. It works, it just works. Um, I have seen many kids, um, stopping their tracks because they're getting assistance, um, and the committee determines what would work to make a difference, they work with the families and with the kids. Um, it's extremely important. Secondly, the sailing program has been wonderful, I don't know the future of it because of finances. However, the, um, counselors, the social workers at Human Services, Bruno as sailor, um, uh, Mike Talbot as sailor, coming from different fields, um, worked with these kids. Now, many of these kids have never seen the river, that, truly, they have never crossed the river, they have never been on a boat, maybe they don't know how to work with other kids, and they don't know how to take direction from adults. It works, they take them step by step, focus on them, what they can do, and build their confidence. It has been amazing to, for me to even hear about the growth of these kids. So there's no money involved, it's all volunteer, um, and it's a wonderful, valuable service that's been, been provided in Groton.
Thank you. Yes?
In loo, in, in that light of that, I would like us to consider looking towards the Sea Scouts, the Venture Crews, the Boy Scouts, the Cub Scouts, which are now all co-ed, and are far less expensive than the sea program that the maritime program that Groton has run in the past.
There is no cost. The sailing program is absolutely free, all volunteer-run.
I'm just looking at a program that has an extremely good success rate, and if we wanna look there, there are a lot, 'cause that even starts them in elementary school.
Can I interrupt on that? There is a cost to Cub Scouts and all those other things, because they have to get uniforms and stuff like that, so there is a-
And we have hand-me-downs programs in most troops. And we have hand-me-downs programs in most troops.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for those ideas. Thank you again for coming out tonight, we appreciate it, and I hope we can keep this going.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to Counselor Franco, who has been really hardworking and dedicated and came to everybody.
She has indeed.
We're going to give you a banner, somebody. I started a jar sticker. As a sister.
We are still live, so let's, let's continue on, thank you again for coming out. So, we are on to item number seven, we'll just stay here instead of moving. Consideration of Committee Referral Items as per Town Council Referral List. Is there anything on this list that we wanted to talk about this evening? No? All right, any other business that anyone has before the council? Or the cow, sorry. Seeing none, is there, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Moved by Atwater and seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so carry unanimously, we are adjourned at eight-thirty.